Good evening, everyone. This is a regular City Council meeting, Tuesday, October 15, 2024. Called the meeting in order. Madam Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Thank you. Next agenda item. Please join me for silent prayer and flag salute. Thank you. Next agenda item, replay statement. Madam Clerk may have a replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, October 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrokable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item, council, any agenda approval, addition or deletion. If it's none, then I would like to move the next agenda item presentation. Subject, Key to the City, presentation, Dawn Natoli. Thank you, this Key to the City to Dawn Natoli. Couple meetings before Vice Mayor Lozano asked and council was consent to give this presentation done, and you did lot of services. You did lot of service in the city of Galt, county of Sacramento, and all other places. So now I would like to turn to Vice Mayor Lozano.
City staff, fellow council members, and members of the public, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation today. As many know, the key to the city's symbolic gesture of appreciation and welcoming to a recipient. Receiving the key is one of the city's highest honors, and the keys will only be presented in a manner that's consistent with our mission, vision, and goals. Dawn Natoli, for many reasons, is up here today, but I want to point out a couple. The city of Galt has a mission of committing, committed to being a provider of exceptional public service that are responsive to the needs of the community and honest and efficient. And I think that that's kind of a piece of our mission here in the city, and I think that really, really speaks to Dawn's commitment to the city of Galt and certainly the communities around. He has had many, many elected positions in the area here, including school board, city council, and certainly, as many of you know, our county supervisor for, I think, 30 years? 28 years, so almost 30 years. And prior to that, serving as the chief of staff to the former supervisor, the late Toby Johnson. And Dawn has done that in a fine fashion, in a way that is responsive to the community. And I will say that there hasn't been a time in my, I think I've known Dawn since about 2009, where I have picked up the phone and called and asked to either meet, have coffee, run something by him where he wasn't willing to do it. And so he was very responsive to me, and I hear from many community members in our city and our community about his responsiveness to a stop sign that may have been needed in a place and, you know, helping get our community what we need and when we need it. A couple of other things, just real briefly, more recent items in which Dawn's been a part of, is helping with the Sunshine Food Pantry and some funding related to that and to their endeavors of giving back to the community, working with our seniors, as well as working with the Galt Teen Center and helping that process come along for the best of our youth in our community. And he's done that with total distinguished service, as well as an unselfish way about him. And many that know him know that that's pretty much kind of wraps Dawn up, right? I mean, that's what he does. And even after his time in public service, I see him at events, he's talking to people, he knows everybody's name. I need to figure out how you do that, because I am horrible with names. I don't even, sometimes I forget my kid's name, so. But he does that so well, and that just shows the connection he has with the community. So I thought it was appropriate that we honor Mr. Natoli for his service here. And I know that many other organizations have honored him with park namings and building namings and many things, and they're all well deserved, but I think the most important one that you can get is a key from the city of Galt. So, thank you, Dawn, for coming tonight. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano, and certainly Mayor Sandu, and members Papino, Vandenberg, and Farmer. I've had the opportunity to know and work with each and every one of you throughout my years of service, and certainly with other members of the staff here. And you're very capably represented here in the city of Galt by your council and mayor. And I know that over my years, certainly being born and raised in this community, had the opportunity to come to know many, many folks who influenced my life in positive ways, and certainly allowed me the opportunity to grow, certainly in my experience, and certainly to pick up a little wisdom along the way, but also to represent this community. And as Rich said, I had the opportunity to serve for many years on the Galt High School Board of Trustees for a brief time on the Galt City Council before I took the position that was offered to me by then-supervisor Toby Johnson, as Rich mentioned, who I had the good fortune of working with all those years. I want to say it's really an honor, and I, Rich talked to me a few weeks back and said that he had this idea, and I kind of thought to myself, well, that's very kind, and I'm humbled by it, but certainly there are many, many deserving people, some here in the audience this evening, who have contributed in many ways to this community. And thank you, Tina, for, you know, and this clerk staff for following up with me. And I do return my phone calls, but now I have this answering machine at home. I don't have a secretary anymore, so you either catch me on my cellphone, which seems to be perpetually full voicemail. But I want to just say that this community certainly is very blessed in many, many ways. And as I mentioned, my good fortune certainly grew up here and to make my home here and to continue to make my home here. And, you know, as we see the events that, you know, face our world, certainly our nation, and certainly our state here in Galt, you know, there are always challenges, but many opportunities and many good things to be very, very pleased and proud of. And again, I had a small role in some of those things, and by virtue of the folks who placed their trust in me through the ballot box, was given the opportunity for many years to represent this community. And I'm pleased to call it my home and to have the key to the city. You may want to change the locks, I don't know about that, so. I'm the police chief here, so. No, but in all seriousness, it is a tremendous honor, and I've yet to figure out with some of the acknowledgements and so forth, how I'm going to, I'm not one for displaying them, but I certainly take them to heart and will keep them. And again, it means a lot to have your kind words, Rich, and certainly thank you for your service. And Kevin, I know both of you are, you know, will be, and Jay are concluding your terms on the council, but again, this community's been well represented over the years, and I thank you very, very much. I'll stop the speech here, and I know you've got a fairly full agenda, so with that, I thank you very much, and thank you for your friendship and for the kind words, and keep up the good work, so.
Thank you, Dawn. Vice Mayor Lozano, explain in detail what kind of service you did in the community. Now I would like to ask, any council member want to make any comments regarding this?
Sure. I don't know a whole lot I can add, other than 2010, not when I got on the school board, but when I was running, I couldn't count the times that people pointed to you as an example, you know, serving the community in a, you know, in this political world. So I just appreciate the example, appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Natoli, you know, I would go so far to say that people don't even know if you're a Democrat or Republican, and we need a lot more of that in this, you know, in the nation. So I appreciate your fair and balanced commitment to everybody you represented. Well done. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, what more can be said? But I think it's funny, for those that don't know, I have kids older than you were when you were on the city council, so, quite the career. But I think, yeah, what Jay was saying, you've always had a really good balanced way of kind of looking at, you know, local issues and trying to do what's best for the community, and then for the county, of course. I mean, you pretty much are an example of, for anybody that wants to be in public office, I mean, what you could aspire to. I mean, I know for me, you know, you were definitely a role model, and I appreciate all the times I called you, and, you know, there was issues in the community, and you were willing to sit down, and whether it was someone's living room with some seniors or just giving advice on something, you always, you know, were willing to get you on the phone, which is pretty, pretty, you know, pretty gracious of you. You have big shoes to fill, Mr. Hume, which you already know. So anyway, so congratulations, and with that key, you know, feel free to let yourself anytime. So congratulations, Dawn.
Thank you, Sean. Now I would like to thank you, Pat Hume, current board of supervisor, and thank you for coming on this meeting. Pat, you want to say anything? If it's not, then I would like to, whole council can come over there for the photo. Thank you. Thank you. Next agenda item D, public comments. Madam Clerk may have a public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Thank you. Next agenda item, reports by city council members on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Mayor, we do have a public comment, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Gracie Molson.
Hi. So first of all, I'm very impressed with the presentation by Dawn Natoli. I was actually at one of his, oh, one of his election parties when I was like this big. So I've known Dawn a very long time, and he's done great service for this community. We've been here for 15 minutes, I want to, I have a lot to say. I'll try to make it in five, but we've been here for 15 minutes, and I just want you guys to take into account how long we have been here, because I might be a little all over the place with what I have to say. But I also want to point out that time matters, and I want to put the notion of eight minutes in your mind, as we've been here for 15, so just think of that, eight minutes. So, my name is Grace Molson, I'm by Gracie, and I've been a resident of Galt since 1981. From preschool to graduating all the way from Galt High, and now I was on the elementary school board for 11 years. My daughter's gone through the entire elementary school system, is now a senior in high school at Liberty Ranch High. And tonight, I would like to address council on a very sensitive matter that I feel is important that we talk about. September was Suicide Awareness Month, and I tried to get in sooner, but my life's been a little crazy lately, because on September 10th, I came home to my daughter, almost unconscious due to bullying over a month and a half at her high school. The bullying started on the 10th of August, so maybe it was only about a month. But the one thing I've not seen addressed in our community is the awareness of suicide. In October, we all wear the pink patches to bring awareness to breast cancer, which is important. But I already addressed the high school school board about this, but I can't think of one teenager that I know that has ever had breast cancer. I'm not discounting it, it's very important. I actually, I'll get into it in a minute, but I actually brought my patch that I have that our officers wear during the month, from the Pink Patch Project. And it's very important that we recognize that, but there's also other issues in this town that we should recognize. So I don't have enough fingers or toes to count how many teenagers I know that have either had suicidal thoughts, attempted suicide, or even succeeded, and that includes personal friends, and I'll get into that in a minute. And I want to go back to the eight minutes, because on September 10th, when I came home, I called 911. Luckily, I have, I'm no longer certified, but I was certified as a lifeguard instructor and advanced first aid instructor, and I was on the phone for eight minutes with 911. I called 911, called police, dispatched me over to Consumus Fire. I do know that they are understaffed and that they service all of Sacramento County. It took eight minutes on 911, and it took, because the, I don't know the station number, but it's the one on Walnut and Corleone, it took them less time to get to my house than I was on the phone, which, in a life and death situation, is a little worrisome. So while we have counseling services on our school campuses, I feel that this is something that the community needs to address in the month of September. Mental health should definitely be talked about and not be considered taboo anymore. I am lucky I got home in time, and my daughter's getting the services and help that she needs, both from her doctor and from her school. I feel that how we honor breast cancer, our veterans, and so on, we should also educate the public about suicide. In the month of September, we should wear teal and pink to acknowledge suicide awareness and prevention. Our officers are part of the Pink Patch Project, and they wear the pink patches in October. If it is possible, in September, the city or police department should partner with a suicide awareness organization to raise funds to put back into our community for these services. Depending on what research you look at, suicide is the second or third leading cause of death amongst our youth. Ironically, I had my non, I had my non-custodial training today for corrections, and suicide was our first topic today, so I actually have some numbers I'll give you in a minute. But 4,500 youth succeed each year, which is nationwide, which is 4,500 too many. What I was not able to find, and actually I was able to find it, I was able to find data, so outside of the youth, which is, so with the youth, it is accidents, homicide, suicide. Depending on which research, it's either accidents, suicide, homicide, or it's accidents. So it's in the top three of our youth. It's the 11th leading cause of death amongst people in the nation, and in 2022...
Gracie, are you almost done? Your time is up.
Is it?
Yes.
Tracy, can you wrap them up with the next minute and a half?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you wrap them up?
I'll try, I'm sorry. In 2022, 49,000 Americans died by suicide and 1.6 million attempted suicide. Let me finish off really quick, then. I apologize. So, yeah, anyways, yesterday I ran into a friend of mine from high school whose twin sister left this world in 2001 by suicide. So when I shared her story, she actually texted me today, wondering if there was some way we could start a support group in our town for youth who have struggles with depression, anxiety, or suicide survivors. And maybe there could be a partnership similar to the Youth Commission that the new mental health coordinator could help facilitate. I'm also planning on bringing this to the elementary and high school board again, when I find the time, so we can target our middle schoolers and our high schoolers. And I am also requesting that the city council make a resolution to declare September Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I would also like to set up a meeting with the chief to talk about patches or magnetic details for officers' vehicles. I had this on my car, I took it off to show and tell, and maybe we could do some fundraising and raise more mental health services.
Thank you, Tracy Molson. Chief Kalanaski, could you contact information to her?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. The next agenda item is report by city council members on regional board, commission, and committee. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I'll just report on two real briefly. On October 3rd, I had a CACOG Land Use and Natural Resources Committee meeting. The next one is going to be Thursday, and Councilmember Papino is going to be going in my place. The largest item is the draft transportation project list options for end performance for the 2025 blueprint, and on Thursday, there will be a vote to secure that and then move forward in the blueprint process. I want to thank Public Works Director John Griffin for his collaboration, both with CACOG and with me, on bringing awareness to a project here in our city that we want to raise to the top a little bit. And I will say that the draft, the draft project list does include some projects here in Galt, and so we're, it doesn't appear that we're without anything, but we really want to push forward the importance of the Walnut Interchange Project. And so, anyhow, that was on the 3rd, and we were able to do that with the help of some of our CACOG colleagues, and we'll see how that unfolds on Thursday. And then, secondly, I'll be attending the Calhoun Real League of Cities Annual Conference Wednesday through Friday, and I'll report back on that at our next scheduled meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
I have no meanings to report on.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, excuse me, last Monday, I attended the Youth Commission meeting, and we went over some of the events that the, and events and activities that the Youth Commission is going to be involved in. Nothing significant coming out of the meeting, just that they're very active, and we have a very large commission. Now we have 12 members, because we actually, for those that don't know, we actually increased the amount of seats for the youth. So it's looking really good, and look forward to being a part of some of those activities that are going to be going on from now through the holidays. One of them is actually, that I would like to mention, is going to be our participation with the Commission on Aging for a blanket and sock giveaway, where the Commission on Aging is collecting blankets and socks for seniors in town, and the Youth Commission did help with this a few years ago, so we're going to reunite again for that and distribute those to some of the care homes here in Galt and some of the senior communities. So it should be fun to have the kids come out and do that again. So I think that was about it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bennerberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Myself, nothing to report tonight. And next agenda item, information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 4 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to make any comment, any agenda item, or want to pull the item?
Yeah, I want to pull item F4, just for a quick clarification.
Thank you.
And I would like to pull item F3, just for a clarification also.
Thank you. Item number 1, receive and file warrant for period ending October 2nd, 2024. Item number 2, minutes of the regular meeting of the October 1st, 2024. Item number 3, resolution approving and adopting an amendment, conflict of interest code pursued to the Political Reform Act of 1974. And item number 4, fiscal year 2023-24 preliminary fourth quarter reporting and budget adjustment. Now I would like to ask, to motion to approve item number 1 and 2.
So moved?
It's moved by Councilmember Bennerberg.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Now the item number 3 is Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I talked to the city manager about this earlier today. In the, it says in Exhibit A for the designated officials and employees, there's a list of officials that are required to complete conflict of interest code reporting, and the question I had was, in it, it has economic development manager, and so I think that's supposed to be director and/or, if we didn't eliminate that position, add director in.
Thank you, Councilman Lozano. I did get a answer to that question, and we did eliminate the manager position, and it is a director position, so we can, you know, change that as part of this process.
Okay.
Thank...
If there's no other comments, I'd like to move the item with the change of economic development manager to director, and move the item as presented.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, too, before we vote.
And I have to public comment on item number 1, 2, and 3.
There is no public comment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Farmer.
Yeah, I actually had asked the city attorney right when he came in, so I might as well just, just for transparency, that mainly the changes that are happening are just adding a bunch of positions that weren't on here originally, but the other change was changes to the Parks and Rec Commission. There was an incident a while back where we had some Form 700 conflict of interest things that were required of some of the commissioners, but they weren't being required of other commissioners, so we had to, like, do some housekeeping, as we call it, to make them, right?
Yeah, so basically, the only changes that are being made to this, this is a required update every two years, there's a biennial conflict of interest code update, this is the second year, and that's just required because typically every public agency's org chart changes, and you add positions, and so you need to make sure that gets reflected into the new code. And then also, in looking at the commissions, the Planning Commission makes, there's certain findings or standards that would require advisory bodies to also have to file Form 700, and the Planning Commission certainly has to, because they have a level of discretion, and they actually make final decisions. And the Planning Commission certainly has to because they have a level of discretion and they actually make final decisions. But the Parks and Rec Commission didn't, and it was because of, they didn't, they don't they don't establish or make policy. They can recommend policy changes to the council like other advisory bodies. So it didn't seem consistent to have them have Form 700 requirements based upon their own duties and responsibilities to set forth in the municipal code. So that change was just essentially a cleanup.
And then on the, I was just noticing, maybe I'm just not understanding the verbiage of it. But on the page that looks like, I'm trying to show you, it's the main title page that looks like it's the one where it says appendix at the top, it doesn't have a number, conflict of interest, blah blah. There's the first paragraph says the mayor, yeah, the mayor, this page here.
Right.
Says the mayor, members of city council, planning commission, et cetera, et cetera, said and it goes on, it says are not subject to the city's code but must file disclosures. What does it mean?
Yeah, so there's two types of code filers, conflict code filers under state law. You have statutory filers, and that's basically those people you just referenced. And then you have filers who have to file based on their own, our own local Conflict of Interest Code. And that is guided by the FPPC, but every organization has different positions, different titles. So we have to manually input that into our code. But even if we didn't have any of those positions under state law, the offices that you just listed have to file per state law. So that's just the saying, you have to file per state law. That's all that is saying.
Yeah, I just didn't understand what it said not. I was trying to understand what I was reading, so.
Yeah, it just meant not subject to the city's local Conflict of Interest Code, but you are subject to the state that requires it. So you're a statutory filer, not a designated filer.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. I appreciate the explanation. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If any council member, any other comments on this? If is none, then I would like to move this agenda item F3. It's moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Next agenda item is F4. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, and I apologize just bringing this up, and I know, first welcome Carly. So I didn't want you to get to your first meeting without a question. I just had, I just wanted, if you could just give me just a little overview, quick summary about what this item is, just for the public, because it has to do with the budget and finances, so.
Sure. So for our audit, what we're doing is we're looking at preliminary numbers. These are just preliminary, so we're not, you know, these aren't final numbers in any way. But we're looking at our budget and making sure that we are capturing essentially the actuals. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm super nervous. We are we're ensuring that what we have accounted for in our financials in terms of budget appropriations is correct. So these are adjustments to true up what are, we've accounted for in our budget.
Okay. All right. And I know Mr. Rice, you did come by and speak to me about this today, but I just want to bring it up because it was on consent. And sometimes I don't like when financial items are always on, you know, just for the public. So thank you, Carly, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council member on any other comment or question on this agenda item? If is none, then I'm looking to approve that, motion to approve that F4 item number?
So moved?
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Papino. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item, schedule mayor notice of public hearing. There is none. Next agenda item, regular calendar. There is no regular calendar. Next item, I, communication. Madam Clerk, any communication?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Next agenda item J, city clerk's report. Any report from city clerk?
Nothing.
Thank you. Comments by staff?
Yes. First up, Amy Mendez, intern community development director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Just briefly wanted to update everybody on the Small Business Assistance Grant Match Program. We opened the applications today to be accepted. And so last I checked, I've been in meetings most of the day, but I think there were four that we had received. Bright and early this morning, I think we had two folks at the counter, and then we received two via email. So we've pushed that out to the businesses via email. I'm also going to be putting something on our website. I've asked all of the businesses that we've had contact with to please share with the other Old Town businesses, just to make sure that everybody is aware of it. So please continue to share the information. Councilman Lozano, I had one of the business owners drop in yesterday, so thank you. He plans on submitting an application as well. So just wanted to update folks on that. And then one other thing, Armando, I know the Parks Director's not here, but there's a survey that we released yesterday to the community for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So please share that with our residents to make sure that we're collecting all of their insights on their desires for Parks and Recreation needs. This is open to the public. This isn't a scientific survey, but it is a survey that we would like to make sure we get as much input as possible from the community. So it's on our Facebook page. I will have it on the website tomorrow. I was hoping to do it today, I just haven't had a chance. But that will be available, and I believe the next meeting is scheduled in December. I don't have the exact date, but we will begin advertising that as well relatively soon. So just wanted to touch on that because I know it had been brought up previously.
And then second up, Public Works Director, John Griffin.
Just wanted to give council an update on the paint drop-off event that was hosted this past Saturday. Again, that is something that, those fees are collected when everybody purchases a can of paint. So with the exception of city staff time to help facilitate and coordinate that, that event, there is very little cost to the city. We had a total of 151 citizens utilize the event. And we also provide the same service when there is the household hazardous waste event. So this isn't the only time to do it, but we had a very good turnout on Saturday.
And then lastly, I just want to welcome Carly to the team. I think she's going to be a welcome addition to the group. And Carly's been with the city about eight years. Her most recent position was accounting manager. So we're very excited to have her on board. And then also a reminder to council that we are not having the next council meeting election night. So we won't see you again until November 19th. And I would like to say good luck to all the council candidates out there.
Thank you. Next agenda item is L, comments by city council member and future agenda item. Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yes, thank you. First of all, welcome Carly to your interim position. I'm sure you'll do a fine job. And you did a great job answering the question on the fly today, so thank you so much. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One was, we had a great presentation by Ms. Malson today, and I thank you for coming and presenting. I know there are times when we talk about personal items in public. And for you to do that and put that out there in the interest of the city as a whole in suicide awareness, I think is important. I would, I would like city staff to meet with Ms. Malson and see what other things outside of just a resolution that we can do moving forward. I did like the idea of the car magnet on our city vehicles, including the police department. I think that'd be a great idea. And then maybe as the summer approaches, talk about what we can do to get the word out, just like we do with breast cancer awareness. So that would be my request as we move forward for that. In addition, I have two more brief items. One is, I guess, a question for city staff and attorneys and certainly my colleagues. We see a need sometimes in the community when graffiti is covered up. It's just kind of covered and blotched and not finished in terms of paint or making it match or making it close to matching. And so sometimes over time, you know, signs come, get covered by graffiti, and our graffiti abatement team goes out and does an excellent job, timely fashion, covering it. But if we never really go back and fix, fix those things in terms of making it look more like the rest of the either sign or sound wall or whatever it is. So what my thought was, and I had a community member come to me and ask about this, is this something that the beautification committee could tackle or at least be a part of? And the reason I ask that is because our literary abatement worker has taken all their fun away. And that's a good thing, right? But, but maybe this might be something that they can do, that they could be involved in. And I don't even know necessarily that they would want to be. But I just thought that might be an opportunity for our beautification committee to be involved.
I'm not sure I have a answer right now, but it's something we can investigate.
Yeah, not looking for an answer, just thought I would bring it up as a concern and, or not a concern, but a, an item to look into. And then lastly, I've talked to at least two community members and a we received a written public comment tonight about Amador. And so there are two issues, I think, that Amador Avenue at Carroll Drive and down to Nathaniel have. And one is, at certain times of the day, people that are traveling southbound on Carroll, instead of waiting at the stop sign to turn right onto Amador or left, they're using the side street to circumvent the stop sign, go out to Amador where there is no stop sign, and continue on to like Lincoln or. And so could we look at the, maybe do a traffic count or something over there to see if if there's something that we can do to enhance the safety there? One of the other issues that came up was somebody that lives in that area turning onto their street off on Amador, onto Carroll, sorry, when it's dark, has almost hit people wearing all black at night. It's not very well lit. So maybe look at if we could put in a lighted crosswalk or maybe fix lighting that's over there. That would be great. And then the public comment we got today late in the, before the meeting was traffic speeds down Amador from, I guess, the Amador Loop there at the end of the new development going, I suspect, both west and eastbound. So I just want to bring those up and make the public aware of it to drive safely, be aware of pedestrians and you know, cutting through neighborhoods to avoid stop signs is not always the safest thing to do either. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino?
Thanks, Gracie. Had far too many professional and personal scrapes with ideations, attempts, and successes. So we can never pay enough attention to prevention, especially amongst the kids. Thank you, and looking forward to anything the city can do to work together on that. And as Don Nattoli said, I'm about out of here. And thinking about that in the last 14 years, between the school board and the planning commission and up here, there was one theme that is consistent the whole way. And that is working against or around the nonsensical, impractical requirements and restrictions put on us by primarily the state government. And, and then trying to comply with those in the form of the unfunded mandates. And whether it's, like I say, school-level development or city government, that's, that's one consistent thing that we all deal with, is, is fighting against that stuff. So as you get ready to mail off your pink envelope, which is a very unserious thing in the state, as I noted, that my daughter, who hasn't lived here for four years and is registered in another state, her ballot arrived at my house, and I was on my honor to check the box on the outside that says, "Check this and put it in the mail if the person is dead or doesn't live here anymore." I can do that, being an honorable person. However, they're blanketing the state with those kind of ballots that maybe other people wouldn't do so much. So as you think about voting for state propositions and giving the government more money and authority and choosing the people that you vote for, I just ask you to consider those things. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, thank you, Gracie, for your comment. What I was gonna, and thank you for bringing it up, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Papino. I would totally support a resolution, but I think also, you know, we should probably look at doing something more symbolic. So an idea I had is if, and we can communicate after the meeting, Gracie, but I was thinking maybe if you wanted to see if you can come to the next cast meeting, Kevin and I are both on cast. And so cities and schools together, and I think that might be a good venue for you two. And I'm pretty sure that you can do public comment at that meeting, although we never have them. But, and maybe just bring that up in that venue there, so we can maybe just kick off a conversation of kind of how the cities and schools together could work on something like that. Or what ideas are, what the schools currently, I'm curious what the schools currently do. I know they have counselors and things. But I think, you know, I think to bring more awareness. So if we can communicate after, you know, between now, the next cast meeting, I'm not sure when it is, we only meet every other month. But, so if you're interested in coming to that, I can talk to our person who sets the agenda for that and see if, you know, what we can do on that. So the second thing is, I would like to, and this is fine if this comes back as maybe when the new council's seated, but something came up today after we actually had met Chris. And I think there's a, there's a discussion needed about the Commission on Aging. I feel like this commission is not kind of in line with what the other commissions are doing. They're definitely not operating within their mission statement. I went online and read the mission statement. And I feel like there's many aspects of what's going on with that that's hindering. We've lost a lot of good committee members or commissioners, actually, should I call them, because of some things. And I don't want to get into that now because we can't talk about it. But I just wanted to see if this council would be interested in bringing that back to discuss a few things regarding the Commission on Aging. And maybe there's some tweaks that need to be made with that to line it up with the others. So I don't know if there would be support for that. And I'm fine with waiting till the new council comes aboard and making it start it. Then it's not a pressing issue at the moment.
I mean, is this something the council would be interested in staff investigating any issues prior to that? I mean, is there?
Well, some of the issues have to do with just how it's, it's kind of put under Parks and Rec. It kind of, the way the meetings are ran, who runs the meetings, the way the oversight, there's no council appointee to that, which is weird to me. So they don't have a good line of communication with the council, and that's, that's really the main problem. So I feel like, you know, with like the Safety Committee, for example, Mr. the mayor sits on, you know, he's privy to things that are being talked about because he's that representative. Same thing with me with the Youth Commission and so on. But commission agents will have that, and I feel like that it's such an important thing, seniors and taking care of seniors in this town, as you and I have worked together on some things. So I just think that we need, we should revisit that, the role of that.
I think that'd be a great idea, and I think that, you know, I certainly could provide some insight.
I mean, if it can come back before you leave, I'm fine with that too. It's not urgent, but yeah, I wasn't trying to exclude anybody, but.
And we've chatted about some of it, and so I think I could, and it could come back later after December, that's fine. But I just think that I could provide some input there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're here to discuss those problems. That's our job.
All right. And then lastly, gosh, I had one more item. I'm trying to remember what it was. Oh, just piggybacking on what Kevin was saying, I wish the candidates running for council luck, and I think we got three good candidates. I'm going to be happy with any of the two that are. I'm going to be happy with any of the two that are, that are elected, and I look forward to, you know, continuing my term with whoever that may be, and don't forget to vote, and I want to stress that anybody's watching, which I don't know if people watching, that is so important to vote. I know people are very disenchanted with voting in the state, because they feel like everything's a foregone conclusion, but as Kevin Papano mentioned, the propositions are super important, but more importantly than that, the local elections are very important. We have had local seats be decided by literally a handful of votes in the past. You cannot understate, you can, yeah, multiple elections, you cannot understate the importance of having your vote cast, so everybody needs to vote, and if you just don't care about politics, at least vote on your local elections, your school board members, your city council members, and so on, so. With that, wish everybody luck who's running, and I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanenberg?
Starting to sound a lot like an exit speech. Grace, thank you so much for, I guess, making yourself, or pushing past your uncomfortable feelings and your, the difficult time to bring it to our attention. I fully support what other council members said, and also may, maybe suggest that the Youth Commission get involved as well, they, they work it, or they attend both the schools, so it might be a good resource as well. As far as voting, I am a strong believer in, in voting, and I would argue that you should vote no on every single bond, because it costs the taxpayer double of what the bond is. If it's a $30 million bond, it costs us $60 million, so a $1 million project will cost you $2 million, I don't think that's smart use of our money, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Myself, thank you for the public comment, and thank you for those who attended the, this meeting, and especially thank you for Gracie bringing this comment to our attention. I believe every council member are interested to hear that. Thank you, also, thank you for all the staff member working hard, and I also congratulation to Carly Sanders as the interim Finance Director. Have best of luck. I think that's all from me. Any comment from anybody? If is none, then I would like to adjourn that meeting 6:52. Thank you.